Good afternoon, everybody. We're going to call to order the meeting. Sorry for being a little bit late. We're calling to order at 6:04. I'm going to do a roll call real quick. We'll start with Eric Joyce.
Present.
Mike Blessing.
Here.
Clerk. Eleanor Evans.
Present.
And myself, Raquel, and Stacy is not attendance with us today. Where am I here? We're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Eleanor, if you'll lead us, please.
Yes, please stand, place your right hand, raise your flag. Ready? Begin.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please, sit down.
Thank you all. We're going to go with Public Court of Action taking a closed session. There's nothing to report out at this time. We're going to also go for D, approval of agenda. This agenda will be reapproved as presented with a correction to purchase amount for instructional materials for general consent, item DD. The cost will be reflected as $160,643. This correction will be reflected in the minutes. We'll call for the vote for approval of agenda.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Have a first and a second. We'll call.
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. It's 4-0. We'll call for Board Report. Superintendent Board Report.
So I think the Board will report on the events that we attended just in the last two weeks, so I'll move it right down to the Board Reports.
Okay, we'll start with Ms. Eleanor.
Alrighty. The two major events that we all attended was Oceanside honoring our heroes and Independence Day Parade. And for me, the Independence Day Parade is really, very, really personal because I have so many relatives that were in the military. My father, as some of you know, was a Silver Star Hero, which is the second highest award you can get for bravery. And there's a plaque for him at Mount Solidad, and he's buried at Fort Rosecran. My sister was in Vietnam War as well as a cousin. Her responsibility when she was in the military was to, those soldiers, military personnel that had stepped on landmines and their jaws would be disfigured, their face would be disfigured, and she had the responsibility of putting them back together, to giving them prosthesis, whatever, to make them more better. I'll put it like that. And then my cousin, who was like my favorite cousin, we grew up together, Lieutenant Colonel, he was in the medical corps as well, and his responsibility, he developed the drug testing. Those of you who were around during the late 80s, 90s, you know, you heard about say no to drugs. Well, that was a result of what he did in the military and the civilian population adopted that. You know, the drug test, the urine test for drugs. And I have an uncle, my Uncle Benny, who was in Syria at the beginning of World War I, and because of his heroics there, he earned the Congressional Medal of Honor. So Independence Day Parade means a great deal to me and to my family. Thank you.
Mike Blessing?
Yeah, no report this evening.
Thank you. Eric?
I had the great opportunity to attend both of the major events here in Oceanside that celebrated freedom. So both the Juneteenth event on June 18th and the Independence Day Parade, which was also a celebration of another type of freedom. So they were wonderful events.
Okay, thank you, Eric, and myself. Again, we all celebrated together. But I wanted to say something. So I had to write it down because I get a little flustered, and you all know me, I forget certain things that I want to make sure that I say. So this year, this yearly meeting is when we review our LCAP and budget, which is always a time to reflect on the year. But years ago, when I started coming to board meetings as a parent wanting changes in the district, for many years, it felt like many of the other parents' concerns went on deaf ears. Then I found my voice for advocating and for myself and for my family and for the students within the district. We fought for updated curriculum and for school sites because many times it felt like, you know, our students were competing with the termites to see who had a better grade point average. We came to board meetings with other parents, you know, to see what was best for our children and what we could do. We wanted equity in our schools and everything that followed with that. And so it was just a really stressful time. But within the last couple of years, it's been difficult, you know, with COVID and everything. We've all gone through the challenge with public education in decades. In the last couple of weeks of school, it's been just a very emotional time for me. And so I realized that it stemmed from attending all the award ceremonies, student programs, promotions and graduations, and celebrating staff and all the years that they have loved and worked with students in Oceanside Schools. Many of them could have left in the pandemic, but they stayed and helped through the worst of the pandemic. So I want to thank our administrators, our teachers and our staff who gave and who continue to give to all our students and families. What you do shows that all means all and what it's truly about. So as a parent, you know, and board member with a student in the school district, I'm excited to see the experience and accomplishments of OUSD. We finally purchased a curriculum to replace the books and materials that have been updated, that should have been updated long ago. Thank you to all who have been making this happen. This is a true win for our families, students and staff. With over 30 construction projects in the works, many of our school sites will finally be given learning environments for our children that they deserve. I laugh because many a time, you know, I walked around our campuses or walked with my student on the campus and I felt like I had to carry a tool bag to fix things that were broken within our school sites or on the school site that we were on at that point in time. But we're also, you know, in the process, we also empower our children to use their own voices. So I have never been prouder than I was to see my own son speak last week on his terms, even when it was most uncomfortable for him even to do so. Everything is a process, and I would admit my patience can be very short, sorry to all in advance, when it comes to making it happen. But knowing the district and community are making great things happen is such an amazing thing for me to experience as not only a parent but as a board member. So again, just thank you to all our administrators, our staff, our support teams that we have within our school district and our community, for all those that are out there in the community working with our students even during this time right now during summer to make sure that, you know, they're getting what they need. So thank you again to all. So we're going to move on right now to general consent items. Do you have any, buddy? Nothing? Okay. We have no, so any board discussions?
No, I'll move approval if there's no polls going from items 4A through, what is it?
F.
Double F.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you. We have a first and a second, and we'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We have 4-0.
We have a comment on?
Do we have a comment on?
On what?
Consent.
Consent?
No, continue on. Continue on.
We'll get right to it.
Bradley Kabaya. On item A.
Okay. Approval of minutes.
Approval of minutes?
Yes, yes. That is correct.
Okay.
All right, aye, by the way, this is awesome. This is good setup right here. So first off, thank you for allowing me to have this time. And Mike Blessing, I'm glad you're back. Hope you're recovered from your operation from a couple of weeks ago. Oh, they're not on?
I think it's on. Just got to get right into it. The one on your right side is the one that'll hear.
Is this better?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, awesome. This is totally not awkward. Okay, so for the gifts, I think that's awesome. Shout out to those people, especially the ones for, you know, donating things, you know, that's awesome. It's great for our students, it's great for our and their learning. So really, real quickly, I just want to go ahead and open it up. In this comment, you know, under the civility clause, this civility policy, and I just want to offer it all in a time of prayer. So those who are willing, please bow your heads with me.
Okay.
For God.
Mr. Kabaya, what are you speaking to? Because you asked for 4A, which is approval of the minutes.
Oh.
So is there a particular one that you were speaking on, on the consent items?
On that subject?
Uh, yes, it's actually, it's 1B, I'm sorry. I misinterpreted.
The acceptance of gifts?
Yes. I just want to give them a shout out. I think it's awesome, and I want to use this time to go into prayer. Okay. Dear Lord God, thank you for this time.
Sir, I'm sorry. We can't have that at this time. I'm so sorry.
It's, the civility clause says I can.
You need to speak on acceptance of gifts to the district.
Okay, what about?
That's what you signed up to speak about.
But this is my time.
That's in the?
Acceptance of gifts to the district is what you signed up to speak about.
So I can't pray over the meeting?
You signed up to speak with acceptance of gifts, so you need to talk about that.
Topic.
On the topic.
That item on this agenda that we're considering to approve or not approve. Is there a reason we should approve or not approve that item?
No, I think it's cool.
Then just speak to that subject and tell us that.
But can I give you a gift of prayer?
He needs to speak to acceptance of gifts.
It's only to that, whether you agree or don't agree to that part of it, and that's the only thing that you can do at this point in time.
Again, doing this, just accept those gifts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll call for the vote. I'm sorry, we did.
We already voted.
We'll move on to presentations. 5A. Approval of 2022 to 2025 Oceanside USD Technology Plan. Our presentation. Go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez. We have Kelly Mockney and Andy Domingo here from our technology department, and they also work with our ESS department. They do both, and they're going to share with us our technology roadmap.
Right. Greetings, distinguished board members. Dr. Vitale, the executive cabinet, on behalf of our CTO, we would like to thank you for the opportunity to share the work that we've been a part of with the technology program. Again, my name is Kelly Mockney, and this is my partner, Andy Domingo. We are educational technology teachers on special assignment, and we are here to present the finalized draft of the 2022-2025 Technology Plan. We have submitted a final draft for approval, and we will present an overview of track updates, of progress from the 2019 plan, and our progress for drafting this term. Okay, I'm going to start off by highlighting our success from the 2019 plan. So we started off in 2019 establishing a technology committee and drafting a three-year plan. And we had a radical rollout in that plan for one-on-one students, devices, stat devices, and increasing all user mobility from desktop to mobile laptops and Apache projection solution. And of course, COVID expedited that a little bit, but we're still able to do that because of supply chain issues successfully accomplish those goals. Moving forward, we are looking at goals for to continue to work on from our 2019 plan is to use the SAMR model, moving from just simple substitution of paper pencils to technology, but augmenting or quantifying and redefining student learning. So the pedagogic shifts are based on our current survey data and operational data. And of course, our primary goal is to improve student outcomes and experience.
Can I ask you what SAMR stands for?
So it's substitution, augmentation, augmentation and redefinition. So starting with that, replacing paper pencil with a computer to how can you augment, quantify and redefine that. So I'll talk a little bit about the committee membership. So in 2019, our committee consisted of members from the board, district management, site leaders, district support from our communications team and IT departments, library media center support, and a variety of certificate and access.
So now I'll talk about the process that we used for developing the roadmap and revising it. First, we landed in 2019 on the Future Ready Schools Framework, which was a result of doing an open needs assessment with our district committee, categorizing those needs that we found and then aligning it to a framework that matched. The one that was closely matched was the Future Ready Schools Framework. So in the process of revising the new plan, we did use the framework itself so that all members were clear on that organization of it. And then we went into evaluating our actions from the previous plan from 2019. And we did that using what's in our third step, quantitative and qualitative data, and analyzed that data to see how far we were. From there, we brought it to our district technology committee to look at the items that we have in our action plan and to establish our new baseline to see what our next steps would be, whether it would be to continue the same action items or to move to the next steps. We finally went to committee drafting and revision and then approval, submitted for approval. So starting off with those five steps, the Future Ready Framework is a research-based framework. It's surrounded by collaborative leadership in the district, around the district, not just at ITX. It also involves the innovative school culture, implementing and evaluating the whole process of that. So we're not just throwing down nice ideas. We are coming up with great ideas, coming to consensus on them, putting them into action, evaluating the progress on them, and then deciding our next steps. Future Ready Framework also has seven gears or eight areas focused, which I'll talk about in this moment. And then student learning is always at the center of this framework. So that's in line with student's learning. So there are seven gears. And the first gear, curriculum instruction and assessment. And that one is what do we teach? How do we teach? And how do we know that what we're teaching is helpful to the students? The second one is personalized professional learning, which is how do we train and support our teaching personnel to get them to be more effective instructors and teachers? The third gear is budget and resources. We always need that in order to provide for all the actions that we do. And then the fourth gear is community partnerships. How do we reach outside and how do we allow the community to reach inside of our district? So leading to and receiving progress from you. Data privacy has to do with how do we train ourselves to look at data as educators, as educators, so that we can make reasonable and effective plans? Privacy has to do with how do we keep our network secure? The sixth gear is robust infrastructure, which has to do with all the hardware and software that we were fortunate over the last few years to bring into our district through the COVID funding. But it also involves how do we maintain the hardware? How do we repair it? And how do we keep it updated? And then the seventh gear is use of space and time. How are we using our time? Are we being effective and powerful in it? And how are we using our space to be more flexible and able to meet the needs of students? And all seven of those gears, like I said before, are surrounded by collaborative leadership, bringing different departments, different sites, different levels of information together to make a best plan.
All right. So we'll talk about the progress from the 2019 roadmap in each of the seven gears that we established in 2019. So for curriculum instruction, we have processes and standardized tests in place that are used throughout the district. For our professional learning, we implemented ed tech lead learners, which are teachers that are at each site that these are the teachers that support professional learning at their site. Oh, the ed tech leaders support the teachers at their site. And we also have Kahoot and Hight as online learning modules for teachers to do asynchronous online learning on technology tools that pedagogy have their competence. For infrastructure, we've implemented one-on-one student devices and teacher devices and established a classroom technology standard. For our community family partnerships, we've streamlined our communication with our communications department and the new Blackboard website, the Blackboard app, and the communication app, the two-way communication that Blackboard provided. For budget and resources, the COVID funding did accelerate our device placement, so we were able to get those into students' hands quicker than we had originally planned in 2019. And for data privacy, we've increased the data literacy with our site leadership with those assessments and standardized tests that we, like I said, we need and we other assess. So we didn't use it. And we even dabbled into space and time because of the deeper role of learning in what we help people in.
So now we're moving toward where are we going for our goals for the roadmap for 2022 through 25. And it's a shift in focus. We originally, in our last plan, first of all, planned we're focusing on hardware, getting hardware accessible to both students and staff, and then supporting and training them on how to use the hardware or the software. Now, our next phase is shifting so that we're focused on powerful pedagogy. And you asked before about SAMR. SAMR is one of those frameworks and models in which to focus and change the pedagogy and improve it. So our goal areas, some of our goal areas, the major ones in curriculum instruction assessment, is the pedagogy. Or sees SAMR, reader relevance, depth of knowledge, is the standards. Just for an example, the Mace book may expand beyond that. Professional learning, an integrative approach to professional learning, instead of just learning about the curriculum, how to put it into place, is learning about these different pedagogical frameworks and how they apply in those curriculums that we are adopting and implementing. So it's integrating those together instead of them being separate. Infrastructure, a big one is the repair process, looking into making it more efficient. Budget and resources, we're going to be preparing for device refresh in the next few years. So how do we need to set aside budget for that? How do we need to plan out the whole process in a plan? Communication and family partnerships, expanding the family and community engagement through social media websites. We have a brain base, so I know the home business is working with that to increase that and get our results out there more. Data privacy, including whole face data literacy at the school sites. We started that with educators. How do we bring that down to educators who are in the early classroom and more in the day? And space and time, develop the best practices in the classroom environment that we're all getting, that elementary are getting. So how do we get those lines and ideas together and share them out to the whole picture so that everyone can get it?
I think it's one of my favorite things is this being classrooms that seeing all this hardware and software is, so some of the accomplishments that we can highlight are students and staff using our devices and software, the TV projection and the solution from a faded projector type model to a very clear, high-definition presentation. The software that we see in use, Google classroom, Seesaw, AirPods, Washington, a few of the things that were seen out there. And then goal is to continue to support our digital citizenship in all areas, keeping as well, pedagogy way back to that SAMR model that we're sees, which is creativity, critical thinking, collaboration and communication. And then improving, increasing that professional learning, planning to integrate the technology with curriculum and pedagogy.
So we have some goals and we have some accomplishments. How do we get there? So we had to look at data always. We have both quantitative and qualitative data that we look at, which is briefly talked about here. For quantitative data, we use some Rite Bites, which was a survey that ran through the whole district, administrators, teachers, students, third through 12th grade, parents. And so from them, we got responses in different areas to see how we were progressing in technology. And so here's a dashboard of what we, what our results were. And goal means that we were overall proficient as a district. In classroom, the first of the four areas, classroom, and the last one, environment, we are also proficient in those areas, shown by the goal. The second and third, access and skills, we were overall advanced. And you can see access there because of our concentration on getting devices into students' hands and teachers' hands, their access was advanced and exemplary according to Rite Bites.
Can, before you go on to the next slide?
Yes.
Can I ask you, the evaluations of teacher, is that the, like, the student score? Is that the students scoring the students? Or is that everybody scoring the students' use of the 4Cs?
Great question. The students self-reported on themselves what their own experience was, as did teachers. Teachers also reported on what they thought their levels were for students. So from, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, no, it just, it just strikes me from that slide that teachers are asking for support in professional learning to use the 4Cs, it looks like.
Yes, and that's exactly where I was going next. The red areas are emerging, use of 4Cs, which we're coming back, keep on coming back to. The teachers were asking to learn more about that. And also in professional learning. So those two together point in a direction that our plan is really focusing on, which is that pedagogy and the professional learning in that area.
All right. So for our qualitative data, I get to talk about our ed tech lead learners. And these are those superstar teachers that are going beyond their classroom description and supporting other teachers at their site with professional learning and technology troubleshooting. They're investigating and problem solving the tech issues at their school and moving that dial forward. And so these ed tech lead learners, we've met with regularly, and they have reflected and developed their own tech action plans based on their own site data and staff baselines. And so that's where we got even more validation for moving in that, shifting in that area of pedagogy.
So just to come to a summary of our process here, we went through three, three days with the tech, excuse me, the tech committee this, this spring. So day one was evaluation in small groups, in which those small groups selected one of those seven gear areas to focus on, to evaluate and to revise. They used the data that we showed you, but more in depth, and then they identified their accomplishments and suggested next areas. The second day was a revision of those actions, and they were able to take a look at the revised plan that, that came out of day one. And then on day three was the final draft. All the members went through all the All the members went through all the gears to get a complete, complete look at, uh, the plan and, um, offered refining comments, and then, um, offered their approval through consensus to bring it to the board. So that's where we are today. Uh, the last item here is, uh, the plan seeks to, uh, get organizational interconnectivity. So the plan incorporates LCAP in there, along with our district mission, vision, and values. Uh, the portrait of a graduate, there is, there is a place to bring that in so that we can build off of that. Uh, it seeks to bring together district office departments, uh, from the DO South to the DO North, which Kelly and I both jump back and forth across the street. Uh, but bringing all those departments together in the different areas. Uh, but it also brings the school sites together and incorporates their goals, as Kelly talked about, with the, with the site tech plans. It brings together those, uh, administrators from the sites and also the lead learners so that we can get the best, uh, result for our kids. And so, um, that concludes our presentation and open it up to questions or comments.
I have some questions.
First of all, thank you for your presentation. And it's interesting when you talk about each site will be focusing on their needs in terms of embedding, um, technology into the curriculum. I have a concern, you know, and it's really basic. At what age or what grade level do students learn keyboarding? Or is it going to be taught?
Our, um, we have Chromebooks that are for third through twelfth grader. So that device actually has the keyboard on it. So that's when, um, students are using the keyboard. But we have some sites that start some keyboarding and looking at some keyboards to attach to the second grade tablet to start keyboarding then. But it is based on sites and their needs and what they, what resources they want to start.
Okay, my experience has been that students are just, first, second, third grader, just given keyboards and they, they're doing this in seventh and eighth grade. Um, also, along with that, you know, studies have shown over and over again that cursive writing, when students, you know, learn cursive writing and take notes in cursive writing and, uh, write in cursive writing, that the retention of learning is much greater. How do, um, how use in the computer? How are you going to, how are we going to be able to, um, continue that kind of success?
Well, we, California does have the adopted curric, they put cursive into our adopted curriculum so that we are a state that is encouraging that. And so when we look at pedagogy and moving teachers away from that substitution model where they're not just typing words into a computer, that they're using the computer as a tool, that it's not going to be used for just document processing, that they're going to be using the technology for creation and creativity, collaboration, all of those other things. So I don't think that we're replacing cursive. Um, we, there's a place for cursive and there's a place for using technology to modify, augment, redefine learning.
So, um, cursive writing will continue to be taught beginning in third grade?
Yes, that's where it's in the standards.
And keyboarding is going to be taught in second grade?
It can begin when students are ready for it.
Well, how do you define ready?
I, I would define it as when students are, if a second grader is using a compu, a device to type up a presentation, that's when you're going to start introducing, where are the keys? What are you using them for? So, um, we have second graders that are using different keyboarding programs.
So Ms. Evans, um, if I can interject here. One of the things that we know is that our students, we're in a new era. I'm sorry. Uh, we're in a new era where students are being exposed to technology, um, at earlier, earlier ages. And post-pandemic, students are even more involved with technology. So, uh, when Ms. Moch, Ms. Mochni talks about when they're ready, some students may have already had experience with keyboards in their homes. But if we're asking about, so they might be ready for using that sooner than a student who hadn't been exposed in their home. But the state of California really is very thoughtful about the fact, as Ms. Mochni says, that there's a place for cursive and printing. We purchased materials called, uh, Handwriting Without Tears, uh, which we're teaching our youngest students so that they can print effectively because explicit direct instruction and printing is going to be a skill that is going to continue to be needed. So we, it's not that we're substituting, as we said, one for the other, but they will be going in tandem together and students will progress in that way together. Um, in addition to that, a lot of the voice-to-text softwares are becoming even more powerful and is something that you actually have to get very used to, how to use a technology like that. So we'll be teaching that as part of looking towards the future, how to use all three modalities, both speaking to create written word, writing to create written word, and keyboarding to create written word. So we'll be continuing to, uh, assess those and provide them to other students all the way along their career.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, I have a couple more, all right? In terms of, and are students allowed to carry their computers home back and forth? And is, there's also, uh, a card or an extra set of computers in case a student loses their computer or in the case that I'm aware of where a student was robbed and the thief, the adult thief took his computer? So there will always be access so that no one can say, oh, I don't have my computer. Okay, all right. And in terms of broadband, I know we, we gave, uh, away or we allowed a lot of hotspots to go to homes. Are we still doing that? Okay, and I'm also going on the assumption that there's going to be increased personnel in the IT department? Or these teachers are on site? Will they be considered IT people? You said they, they could troubleshoot, but you know, if, how much, how much training or strategy, skill building, whatever is required in terms of for them to be able to get that computer up and running within, you know, the thirty-five, forty-minute class period? Sixty-minute, whatever.
Right, that, that's the beauty of the ed tech lead learners is they're on site. They already have relationships with their colleagues, uh, so that they can help at an appropriate level. Uh, most of what they do is coaching their colleagues on how to use, for example, uh, Google Docs or Google Slides, um, amongst other, other apps. Uh, but they're, they remain a teacher and so they're not, um, no, no, correct.
So how are we going to close that gap? Because that's huge.
Right, so they're, they're, thank you for that question. They're, they're the first level of support on their site so that teachers don't have to wait for, um, an IT person to come from central. But the, the IT people can then focus more of their work on the, the backend. Um, oh, there's something with, going on with this computer, it's not imaged correctly. Things that, uh, that we as teachers wouldn't normally know, but those ed tech lead learners could help. Oh, you need some help on how to, how to do this project with technology in your class. They can help their colleagues in that way.
Can they, will they be able just to call the IT department? Will we have that set up so they can just call, for instance?
Yes.
They're having problems changing their, I don't know, changing their password.
Right, yes.
Can they just call instead of bringing the computer in, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes, they could both, they could either call the helpline, um, or they can submit a help ticket.
Submit a what?
A help ticket in our, our service desk. So it's an online, uh, program in which a teacher or any employee in the district can, uh, can set up a, a help ticket that says, this is the problem that I'm having. Um, and then we have people in IT who would look at all those tickets and problems and then distribute them to the correct person to address them.
Okay, well, those, my questions were pretty simplistic. Um, but those are the kinds of things that keep students and teachers from, um, being able to be engaged in their program as well as create a huge amount of frustration.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, um, first of all, thank you. That was a lot of work and it's really, getting it up to speed to where we are today is a tremendous lift. It, it has given access to kids across the district for the last two years. So all the work that your department has done and that the, the members of the committee have done, um, I do want to commend you for that. The, the tech lead learners, so something we've done, uh, where I teach at is really, we had the, our, our lead learners type program at each site. But what we developed over time was that the students are really capable of dealing with a lot of the lower-level tech issues that teachers have. And so creating a program where the students at the site have this designated tech lead student, this prestigious thing where they're, they're able to jump in and help maybe, if they're another fourth grade class, another fourth grade teacher that needs it, it's a fourth grade student. That way, the access isn't going and interrupting another teacher's class, but you actually have these lead learners all throughout it. And you'd be amazed, I'm sure actually you probably wouldn't be, at how quickly they pick up all of those little things that, that happen so frequently. So I'd love the committee to consider finding a way to bring students into this over the next year and developing that as a program itself.
Yes, thank you for that. That's actually one of our exploration items on the action plan. Uh, so yes, the committee has brought that up and we're exploring and seeing how that could feasibly be done. Because there are a lot of kids, like you said, who can do a lot more.
I've seen that program work. My concern is so that there'll be one student who's going to be constantly out of class. And the parent of that student's not going to be, you know, peachy keen about that. So that program really has to be monitored.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I was on that committee and it, it was a tedious thing and we were looking at all, all angles of stuff. And so thank you, Kelly and, and Andy for just listening to all our woes and all of our questions because there were many a question, um, brought up there and many discussions. So, um, I like, like that whole thing of the students and stuff, we have discussed and we have talked about it. And, and that even the discussion was, was brought up with it, you know, where you would have a rotation. So it was brought, that we would have a rotation of students. So it wouldn't be one student just all the time focusing and just doing everything all the time, you know, because so many times that student says, well, I'll do it, I'll do it. Because they want to jump in because they don't want to be doing their math or they want to be doing whatever else they're supposed to be doing. So, um, I applaud you all for just doing everything that you're doing and, and looking at every aspect and just giving us that opportunity and listening to, again, all of our, our concerns and, and wanting to be able to support our students in any way possible. So thank you again for all you do. I appreciate all the work. Any public input? Nothing?
Move approval.
Remove for approval?
Second.
We have a first and a second, we'll call for a vote. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four-oh, thank you. Now we'll move on to, thank you, Kelly, thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for all your support. Have you got any feedback? Um, we'll move on to number six, personnel. Approval revised job description coordinator from human resources. We have a staff presentation, Andy?
For items six A and six B, these are two revised job descriptions of jobs that currently exist within the district. The updated information just reflects the core work that's being performed in those positions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
None, no. Speakers?
No, public input?
I'll move approval of, um, item six A and six B combined.
I'll second.
Now we'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Move on to five C, approval for a new certified, oh, six B, sorry, six B, yeah. Approval revised classification, chief technology officer. Staff presentation, please.
For this item, we have a, a new job description for a created position called Coordinator Two, Caregivers to Support, to support one of our grants that the district's taken on.
Item six B, is my agenda different?
No, we don't six C.
Six C because we approved six B and six A and B.
They did, they combined A and B, so.
We did A and B.
This is item C.
I did it.
Yeah. So we're on six C, so approval of new certified job description coordinator to caregiver support, which is you just gave. Staff presentation, any?
We have one comment, right?
Patty K? Is she here? And item six C, Patty?
Not here yet.
She's not here.
Here we'll move on.
I'll move approval.
Any board discussion? When you, second, a second. We'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven, curriculum and instruction for seven A, adoption of twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, local control and accountability plan. For final approval, we'll go for a staff presentation, please.
Yes, good evening, board. Uh, the LCAP, uh, and accountability plan, final approval, is a reflection of the, uh, presentation that we had two weeks ago and the hearing, the public hearing around the goals and actions and update to the LCAP. Uh, based on the board's direction, we have identified, uh, an increase of services in the area of attendance through a enhanced contract with TC that we approved within the consent agenda items today. And in addition to that, we will be, uh, interviewing with different tutoring companies this summer to find a tutoring company that will be able to provide additional services, which were a number one priority of our community. And we will be using, uh, Community Schools Grant at this time to fund that pilot to see how we can best serve our students. Uh, approval of this item will allow us to provide those services to our students and move forward for next year.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Um, the Community Schools Grant to fund it, does that mean it's only going to be at Jefferson and Chavez?
No, we have actually six community schools right now. We have Jefferson, Chavez, uh, Libby, Laurel, Mission, and, uh,
Standard and Ray.
Yeah, I just thought we were only doing the tutoring for secondary. Okay, that makes sense. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll call for a vote. Oh, we need approval, sorry.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
We'll call for a vote.
Aye.
I was going to say all those in favor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So he's like.
Aye. That's enough, sorry.
I didn't hear you, I didn't hear you this time.
Getting our cadence going.
Seven B, approval of implementation of AB one oh one, ethnic studies as part of graduation requirements. A staff presentation, please.
Yes, AB one oh one, state requirement for the implementation of ethnic studies is to begin implementation no later than the twenty-five, twenty-six school year in order to support the students in the class of twenty twenty-nine in meeting that graduation requirement that's mandated by the state. However, in Oceanside, in meeting with our counselors, our administrators, teaching staff, it was determined that the implementation of ethnic studies in Oceanside could begin with the class of twenty twenty-six to allow the class to be able to have three years with which to take the course. Additionally, we know that students are eager to take this course and it allows them to have the opportunity to take the College Board's AP African American Studies course, which will be offered in the fall of twenty twenty-four. So the first ethnic studies course would be an introductory course across many, um, ethnic groups and then to be able to start to specialize in different areas and align with our university coursework. Um, additionally, we would also have students be able to take coursework at Miracosta College um, so that they could have concurrent or, I'm sorry, uh, dual enrollment and earn college credit while in high school, uh, through taking a variety of, uh, courses. This will also increase our A through G completion rates.
We have four.
We have three speakers on this item. Anne Jeanette Olver, Rob Howard, and Bradley Tobias. Anne Jeanette, are you?
I'm Dr. Anne Jeanette Olver. I have my bachelor's degree in child development, a bachelor's degree in psychology, a master's degree in developmental psychology, and my doctorate in social work. So I come to, my actual set is educated in the field of children and our psychological health and wellbeing. I'm also a parent of two children in Oceanside, the vice school district, and I'm a psychology professor at Miracosta College and Mount San Jacinto College. I am here to speak in support of implementing ethnic studies. Um, earlier than legally required, the research supports the benefits of ethnic studies for our students. So both qualitative and quantitative data suggest the importance of ethnic studies in improving outcomes for students. Qualitative reports suggest, I have students who talk about how ethnic studies really change their lives. It's the first time they ever felt represented. It's the first time they ever felt represented, heard, valued, and it has a tremendous impact on their cultural identity, which then improves their overall health and wellbeing and it actually increases their opportunity for success. And students that take ethnic studies classes actually have higher success rates and graduation rates throughout college. So I am encouraging you as our school board to really consider the factual benefits. Ethnic studies is its own unique discipline grounded in research methodologies, qualitative and quantitative, and it speaks to some of the points that were just made in our technology. It really utilizes effective pedagogies and it actually relies on community participatory action research. So it is developed by the people for the people. Instead of us studying these ethnic groups as objects from the outside in, it is actually a discipline that has empowered the voices of individuals from within those communities to engage in their own scholarship, to celebrate their histories, their successes, their strengths, their diversity, their diverse faiths, their diverse cultural practices. So it really does a lot to embolden and empower and educate and inform and celebrate the diversity of students we serve here in Oceanside and the diversity of communities that we have. Additionally, it gives knowledge of other communities so that we can address the social tensions in our nation, in our city, and we can understand that that racial divide, we, we actually have more in common than we do different. So I urge you to, to continue to celebrate this opportunity to be in advance of our legal requirements and on the cutting edge of great curriculum and collaborations. Thank you so much.
A board. God, this is short. Can you hear me? Uh, Rob Howard, I'm an Oceanside resident. Uh, I volunteer in Oceanside with a number of youth groups, but I, I'm here in support of ethnic studies as early as possible. My background, um, I grew up in Memphis, Tennessee. Uh, joined the Navy and I just wanna give you my story. I couldn't understand why I was frustrated as I was as a student. I was an engineering student, went to the University of Tennessee, but I struggled not knowing where I fit in. I was an engineering student, I would take classes with two, three hundred students and it'd be me and one other African American student in the class. I say all that to say, I wound up leaving University of Tennessee and joining the Navy. I do have a degree in education and it's helped me to better understand learning and students that I volunteered with. Back to the anger piece, I didn't realize it was frustration over not knowing enough about who I was. It was about not fitting in and not understanding and trying to fit into someone else's space. There was a teacher that pulled me aside and asked me, why are you so angry? You're a very smart young man and you need to understand more about who you are so that you can channel that frustration into success. She gave me a list of books. I started studying, started reading. I disliked reading because all of the books we had when I was in school, uh, were about other people. They weren't about me. They weren't about people who looked like me. And so I say that to say, the sooner you can get young people to learn about other people, if the books that you have are being taught primarily about them and for those who are being taught about themselves, to learn more about who they are, then you begin to break down barriers. As someone who works with youth groups, oftentimes I find some of the most troubled young people are the ones you need to pull to aside and help them find out what their gifts are. And a part of learning what your gifts are is to recognize that you are special, regardless of your race, your gender, um, whatever disabilities you may have, that may be something that you can use to help you break through and then become better at the things you do. So I'm just here to say, I really do appreciate it. I'm excited about it. The more you can do about, in particular, the history that you have here in this area, it is amazing, our native history, our Latinx history, and the history of just what has happened with the African Americans in this community. And for my white brothers and sisters, this is not about eliminating you, it's about including all of us. Thank you, Rob Howard, I'm Oceanside resident.
Brad?
Hey, good evening board. Uh, thank, thank you for this time again. Um, so with, uh, with, with, with ethnic, with this ethnic studies. I'm a huge fan of genealogy. Um, I like knowing where I came from. Um, I, I've actually studied it and I say, um, you know, I, I come from a long line of ironworkers, uh, being from, from the St. Louis area, my, my, my grandfather was helped, was, was part of the team that helped build the St. Louis Arch and that's a huge point of pride for my family. And I say that to, to, to say, we, we all have our own story, we all have our own, our own background and, and just rock on with your background, you know what I mean? Like, it's, it's super cool, you know, we, we, we are a diverse melting pot of, of people. We are the great melting pot for that reason here in America. Um, uh, for this, for this curriculum, um, I just wanna kinda speak on, on the, on the law aspect. I, I know, I know the AB, AB one oh one is law. I understand that, that Gavin Newsom has placed it in here. I, 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 I got it written right here, I've read it multiple times. Um, I know that by twenty thirty, that this is gonna, you know, unless we get a new governor, this is gonna be the law. Um, and there's, and there's, and you guys have to follow the law, uh, which, you know, that's, that's, that's a good thing. Can we all agree that, you know, following the law is a good thing? You know, no one, no one wants to get arrested or anything, so, you know, I'm a huge fan of, of the law. But I, I just, can, can someone explain to me why the rush to, to move it to twenty twenty-six and not twenty thirty? And can someone also explain to me, um, why it's, it's gonna be a full year, uh, as opposed to AB one oh one, which only says it needs to be a semester? Um, in that, I feel like if, if we just place it to, to six months or, or a semester rather than, than the year, we can use that other semester and make a health requirement for our students. We just got out of a once in a, like a century pandemic. I think we need, we need to be focusing on, on, on health and, and educating our students on the health, health aspect, whether it's dietary, whether it's, you know, you know, proper sex ed help, health, you know, things like that. That's a, I mean, I think that's a big deal, uh, you know, especially because of the pandemic. Um, you know, they say, they say a lot of, a lot, you know, on the health part, they say a lot of, uh, members, and I was a Marine Corps recruiter, a lot of, a lot of individuals can't join the Marine Corps because they're overweight, they don't meet the requirement. And that's a national security issue in, in my opinion. Um, as far as the, uh, the stats from the doctor, um, ma'am, if you, if you could, could, could you please, uh, provide this to me? I would be interested in learning. I asked that to, uh, Dr. Sparks, uh, a couple months ago and I haven't received it, but, um, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm currently going for my master's degree and I love learning. But, uh, other than that, thank you for this time. Uh, please consider this, this, this change. Thank you.
I would just say that.
Hold on Eric.
Uh, we have more speakers? Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Good evening. I'm Karen Bickham. I know my name wasn't called. I did sign in to speak, uh, when I entered, so I apologize.
Did you fill out a card like this?
Yes, a yellow form.
Okay, so your time is coming.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I, I was speaking on the ethnic studies.
She wanna talk about this item?
Is it about this subject in exact for ethnic studies?
Yes.
Okay, then can we move her into ethnic studies? You don't have the card?
No, she said she filled out a yellow card, so, but if it's on this item and if you're...
It is on the eth- ethnic studies.
Okay.
I apologize about any...
Can you say your name, please? I'm sorry, can you say your name again?
My, my name is Karen Bickham and I'm an educator. I, I worked with, uh, I worked in Oceanside Unified School District for about fifteen years or so, and then I've moved to other areas and worked in Northern Cal. But I just wanted to speak in favor of the ethnic studies and I have a statement and I, and I do appreciate that you're allowing me to speak. Um, I think that the ethnic... Oh, okay, I'm sorry. This is the best one? Okay, the ethnic studies class will provide all students with the opportunity to study and understand in-depth history of other cultures and ethnic groups that make up this community, acknowledging their contributions, their celebrations, invaluable place in history in this community, this country, and throughout the world. The ethnic studies class will fuel a sense of pride, respect, value, and recognition for all students, maximizing their wellbeing, the wellbeing of all students. And I went to the Oceanside Unified School District and I was so impressed with the values of this school district. It says that students first, our students are our highest priority, every decision is made to maximize our students' wellbeing, the educational equities, uh, every student receives the academic, social, and emotional support needed to thrive. Diversity, our learning community, uh, communities, diverse cultural experiences and intellectual variance drives our collective and individual successes. And then it talks about collaborative relationships, we foster learning environments where meaningful collaboration occurs and, uh, members of our learning community forge respectful response relationships based on integrity, empathy, and dignity. And then it also says how we support our military community. And so hence, I just wanna conclude that ethnic studies class will show respect and appreciation for the history and achievements of other cultures and ethnic groups that is, that may not always be adequately addressed in other history classes or curriculum. And it's saying, and it's saying a message that is very loud and clear, that we value all students and appreciate who they are. So I thank you very much for giving me a few minutes to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one more speaker on this item, Perry Alvarez.
Thank you. Call for approval? Any board discussion?
Yeah, just very briefly. Um, I am absolutely thrilled that our district is ready to move forward. Um, we, we had a community forum, um, about ethnic studies months ago and we had several students come back who had gone through our Oceanside school system and then went on to local colleges and took Chicano studies or African American studies. And their sentiment was, how come this was kept from me? How come my history was left out of the K-12 history books all the way through? Ethnic studies is a, it's a partial fix of that. We have to correct all of our teaching of history, which we have done a lot of by adopting new curriculum, new social studies curriculum. But ethnic studies is a powerful tool that will have a great impact on all the kids that graduate from Oceanside Unified. I'm, I'm thrilled and, um, I would like to move for approval.
I'll second. I'm very supportive of this effort as well, Eric. And staff, appreciate you guys bringing this forward now.
I'm very much in agreement. I, earlier I shared about my own personal experience and interestingly, when I look at whether it's military history or, um, civilian history, I, I don't see the, um, people complexion reflected in those books. And as I shared tonight, you know, the people that I spoke about have been phenomenal in terms of their contributions to not just US history, but world history. So thank you. Yes, I'm supportive of it.
The la- the last piece, there was a question about why, uh, why now? I just wanted to, to really briefly hit, that long timeline for the rest of the state was for districts that hadn't gotten into the work. We were already there, we were already doing the work and we were ready to go now. Not only were we ready, but our district administrators, our teachers, and our students who've come through the program already are raving and ready to get it going for everybody. So I'm thrilled.
I'm excited, cause I know that I've talked to students within the district, um, that have already taken the classes and they have come out just blown away. So to the staff and the teachers and, um, the administrators that support these programs within our district, you all have done some amazing work. And I know that the committee itself that was on the, the, the board members that were on it and the community that was in the meetings and everything, the discussions that were had, I've heard have been really intriguing and I wish I was kind of in like a wa- uh, fly on the wall sometimes. Um, but I know just listening from the students themselves has been amazing and just even when they came across the stage for graduation and just seeing that extra, um, the row that they had, that just because they were a part of that program and just seeing how proud they were that they were able to participate and what they learned and what they got out of that program. So I'm so excited about just moving forward with this because to see that many more students, just excited about learning certain things is just awesome to me. So, um, I'm just ready to move forward with this as fast as we possibly can and now is the time. So it's again, it's about all means all and I'm so totally about that. So call for the vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Where are we? Okay. Seven C. Uh, approval of updated course outlines for applied fitness nine A and nine B. Staff presentation, please?
PE, that's what we're doing right now.
We did B, we did ethnic studies?
Yes.
Oh, seven C, sorry. Seven C. Sorry, I said, I think I said nine C.
Oh, sorry, I heard seven.
Sorry. Wrong glasses.
Good evening board. As part of our work in supporting students in their health and physical wellness, we know that this is essential for their lifelong learning and wellbeing. California state law outlines physical education standards and requirements, which include physical education to be taught to all of our students. Um, upon review of our current course outlines, we found that our ninth grade course, uh, did not, uh, be, which needed to be updated to reflect the full physical education state law requirements that include topics such as the effect of physical activity upon dynamic health, the importance of basic nutrients in food and why those nutrients are important for overall health, what are those, uh, how you can read, uh, food labeling, how, uh, physical activity improves both mental and physical health, the mechanics of body movement, aquanics, including swimming and life-saving, sports, gymnastics, team sports, rhythm, dance, and also self-defense or combatives. So we recommend that this, uh, course, uh, be updated so that our ninth grade students will receive that health education that we know is so important, both physically and mentally. Thank you for your approval of this course outline.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
No, it was very timely, that was just brought up earlier. It's great.
I think it's great. I, I think, um, I just wanna say thank you for including the academics part of that in PE. I know we think PE as, um, playtime, even in high school. So thank you so much for giving it the meat and not just the potatoes and eggs.
I know that for myself, I know looking at it with, when my son took it, or was taking it, it was just, a question is why the two differences and everything and so, you know, he's all about the physical part, not really focusing on the, the other part of it, the academic part of it. And so, but going into myself, just reading the academic part of it, just made us focus and look at things differently, even for him, on the stuff that he was doing within things in his life. So thank you for that. And so with that, I'm gonna call for approval and call for a vote. A motion to approve, sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. We got first and a second, we're all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we can move on to AA. Presentation of adopted budget, adoption of the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three budget, presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez. Brian's just gonna hand me the clicker so we can... Okay, thank you. It's also a laser pointer, very exciting. Well, thank you. We have, um, really excited to be here tonight to present the proposed adopted budget. Each year districts are required to adopt a budget, including a multi-year projection by June thirtieth. The proposed budget is... The proposed budget is based on the review assumptions provided and the governors may revise. Any changes in revenue adopted by the state will be reflected in the 45-day revision and the first interim budget report in the fall. The budget is also aligned with the Local Control Accountability Plan. Today, we're going to be talking about review changes from the 2223 proposed adopted budget from last meeting, multi-year projections, the 10% reserve cap, assignments and commitments, and actions to ensure fiscal solvency. I shared this last time, these are our multi-year projection assumptions. Assumptions are important when budgeting so we can anticipate our revenue based on what we believe the year will look like. The yellow section, um, are the assumptions provided to us from the state. The blue section are the assumptions provided that are specific to OUSD. The COLA provided, or the first row is the attendance ratio of the students. The COLA provided for the fiscal year 2223 is expected to increase to 6.56. We also have anticipated increased costs for Calsters and Calpers. Declining enrollment plays a big role in how we are funded as a district. This year, we lost 112 students, but for the next two years, we anticipate losing a projected 410 students. We also have to factor in the increasing cost of health and welfare of 7%, as well as the cost of utilities and step and column. So those are all of the ingredients that go into our multi-year projection. This year, we have the 10% reserve cap, or the Prop 98 Reserve. As a result of the balance in the Public School System Stabilization Account, the Prop 98 Reserve, the statutory limitation on school district reserves has been triggered for the 2223 budget period. A state law caps the reserves a school district may hold for unes, undesigned purposes once the Prop 98 Reserve exceeds 3% of the minimum guarantee. Beginning with the 2223 fiscal year, the district reserve cap requires that a school district's adopted or revised budget shall not contain a combined assigned or unassigned ending general fund balance of more than 10% of the funds. Because of this law, tonight will suggest commitments for the 2223 budget for the amount exceeding the 10% cap. Here is a summary of the proposed preliminary budget compared to the proposed adopted budget. We had some additional expenditures for the 2223 school year since last week of just over 11,000. Begin, the beginning and ending fund balance, you'll notice that there is a $1.6 million difference between the proposed budget presented on June 14th and tonight's adopted budget presentation for the beginning fund balance for the 2223 school year. In reviewing and analyzing our 2122 budget, there were some expenses budgeted in the unrestricted funds that were not incurred dur, during the school year. This resulted in an increase in the ending fund balance and the beginning fund balance for 2223. The 3% reserve also increased because of additional expenditures in our restricted funds. Here we have components of the ending fund balance. The ending fund balance moves in proportion to our expenditures. We have non-spendables, which includes stores and revolving cash. We have our restricted funds, they're made up mostly of categoricals and one-time monies that increase and decrease depending on when they are received and when they are spent. There's a $4.9 million difference between the proposed budget presented on June 14th and tonight's budget. In reviewing and analyzing our 2122 budget, some salary accounts and restricted funds needed to be balanced, and we also had another month's payroll posting. This resulted in a reduction in the restricted carryover. For committed, because we have the reserve cap of 10%, we are recommending committing 8.6 million in funds for the 2223 year. These include post-retirement, um, GAZB 4345, declining enrollment mitigation for one year, and LCFF supplemental concentration carryover to support our LCAP goals. So explaining what that is in a little bit more detail, the declining enrollment mitigation, what we did was we looked at how much it costs the district when we lose 410 students, and we multiply that out by what we receive per ADA. And that gives us our figure for the declining enrollment mitigation. The LCFF supplemental concentration carryover, we had a huge effort this year to identify our students who qualified, um, in terms of our UPP count, our unduplicated pupil percentage. Um, because we had such a large increase, we had just over 2 million unspent, which will carry over into next year. So that's not money lost, it's money that's going to be spent for next year. These are unprecedented times in the sense that we have been very thoughtful in how we spend our COVID funds. So we already had quite a few COVID funds spent, and the money for the LCFF supplemental concentration has to be sent, spent in a specific way. Even though it's considered unrestricted, you can only use it really to either increase or to improve the services for your UPP students. So you can't just spend it any way you want, and it doesn't fall to the bottom line where you can just redistribute it for staffing or for raises. It really has to go back into the instructional programs and what we provide for our students. So those are those two things, just to give a little bit more, um, explanation. And that's the money that is above our 10% cap, that's the 8.6 million. In our assigned, that's our money in between the reserve and the 10% cap. And that, here we have, um, a slight increase in the assignments because the decrease in the unrestricted expenditures. When we look at this, we have our ADA stabilization plan for two years. So when we look at an ADA stabilization plan, so I'm just making sure I'm... Um, ADA stabilization is when we look at our typical ADA, which was 94%. That was back in the good old days, pre-COVID, when everybody came to school. Now, we're closer down to about 92% and 91, 92%. So we look at that gap in ADA that we would have received, and that's how we came up with that total. So we were trying to put formulas to the loss in our revenue so that then we could set that funding aside to go back and make sure that we had the funding for all of our students' programs and our staff's needs. And the last is the reserve for economic uncertainty, and that increased, uh, because of our, uh, restricted funds being spent. When you increase your restricted funds, that impacts your reserve. Did we have any questions before I go on?
Yeah.
I see you thinking, Mr. Joyce.
Never a good sign. Is it, uh, the, the 12 million for the ADA stabilization plan? I guess I'm not entirely sure what that, what that's going to cover. So that's assigned to be spent in the next year or the year after?
Uh, we'll spend it next year. And so what you can do with that is really look at, what are we spending on COVID money? Is that now money that we'd like, because the COVID money is about to run out, it's, we have two timelines coming up. So we could look at, are there things that we're currently funding in COVID that now we want to transition into the general fund? Um, we haven't settled with our, um, partners yet, our bargaining units, so some of the assigned money can go towards that in terms of our settlements moving forward. So that really comes down to what are the needs of the district in terms of our instructional needs, um, and also with our human resources.
And, and that ADA, I mean literally that ADA stabilization, that needs stabilizing, so I don't know, I know we're doing, um, I know we have TC, we're increasing services with TC that should help with some of our chronically absent students. I don't know, I'd really like to see something very specific about improving. I know that some of our indicators with our foster and homeless youth were really challenging. I don't know, what kind of programs that we can put together for next year for that? So, I, I see that as a space for figuring stuff out, but, but that's a lot of money.
Okay, I'll go ahead and keep on going. Now we go into our multi-year projections. This is when the tables get a little bit more complicated, so I'll walk you through it. Our unrestricted NYPD for the next three years shows anticipated revenues and expenses. Revenues adjust based on the assumptions that are included in the budget. Those are the assumptions I went over earlier that are in the yellow and the blue. Expenses are adjusted based on how much the district expects to spend each year. We anticipate a slight increase in unrestricted expenditures in 2324 and 2425. These are due to increases in Consumer Price Index, considering for inflation, books and supplies and services, step and column, stirs and purrs, as well as health, welfare, and utilities. The net change in fund balance shows that in the years 2324 and 2425, we do begin to deficit spend. This is also attributed to COVID funds no longer helping to offset general fund costs, as well as the increases in expenditures I just noted. The ending fund balance becomes the beginning fund balance for the next fiscal year. Because we don't need any additional funds to meet the reserve, we are able to successfully meet our obligation for the next three years, resulting in a positive budget. The state requires the districts the size of OUSD to maintain a reserve of at least 3%, but no more than 10%. The 3% is calculated on the expenditures of the combined summary, and that's your restricted and your unrestricted.
And this is still operating under the assumption of a 5.38 COLA and a 4.02 off the first slide?
This is a 6.56 COLA.
But the next two years, the 5.38 in the next year, that's the number we're using?
Correct, yeah, then it goes to 5.38 in 2220, 2324, and then 4.02 in 2425. So those could change, just like it changed for us this year.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, now we have the multi-year combined summary. This is when we put both the restricted and the unrestricted together. We budget both what we anticipate to receive, as well as what we anticipate to spend. This also includes the decrease in ADA and COLA, uh, the decreases from 2223 to 2324 because the COVID fa, funding is falling off. For expenses in 2324, the expenses go down because of fewer COVID expenditures from the previous year. We also make our last serp payment. Um, the revenue and expenses do stay more consistent from 2324 to 2425. You can also see the deficit spending taking place in 2324 and 2425 because we are outspending our revenue. For the ending fund balance, the beginning fund balance plus or minus the difference between the total revenues and the total expenditures. We have the non-spendables and other commitments, that's anything prepaid, such as contracts, OPEB, and committed funds. And then we have our adjusted ending fund balance. It is the difference between the ending fund balance minus the restricted funds and the non-spendables or other commitments. We have no reductions needed, and we do have our 3% reserve, which is calculated on the expenditures of the combined summary. So actions to ensure fiscal solvency, we are in really great condition, but as I shared earlier, some of our expenditures do outpace our revenues, so we need to be thoughtful in the years moving forward to ensure that we can remain in a positive status. We want to continue collaborating with San Diego County Office of Education. We meet regularly with those offices, closely monitor student enrollment, and adjust staffing accordingly. Reduce staff as funding timelines expire, for example, when we have staff funded by titles, grants. And then we also do have staff fo, funded out of COVID funding that, um, we just need to make sure we keep an eye on and re, reduce as the funding goes away. Evaluate our health and welfare costs, identify possible reductions in contracted services, and continue to incorporate updated revenue and expenditures as they become available for current and multi-year projections. And that's all.
Do we have one public comment?
Thank you. Thank you very much for, um, the district being fiscal solvent. It's greatly appreciated. I apologize.
Todd Madison.
How many comments do we have?
All right, thank you. So by the way, San Marcos Unified has an awesome public comment, Mike, if anybody's interested in it, it's tremendous. So, um, it's nice to be up here and looking at black in the budget for a change, um, one of the first times in many years. Positive is awesome, way to go. Um, of course, that was done with record-setting infusions of one-time money and revenue unlikely to be repeated in our lifetime, but that's a great thing anyway. Great work by Greg and his staff on the tech, um, roadmap. Great work by the LCAP committee. You know, I really like the, it's nice to see the focus on improving our tech and our services for high-needs kids. Um, spending $38 million on that is going to be great. Um, it's interesting to see what we can do with extra money when we don't spend it on ourselves, isn't it? The list of additional teaching positions being added is welcome too, but the key question is can we sustain that? Um, I see a lot in the LCAP, we're spending one-time funding where it should be spent, HVAC systems, um, shade structures, training for staff, things like that. Um, I also see things that generate a lot of ongoing expense as well. The list on page eight doesn't give total numbers of teachers being added, but it looks like quite a, quite a number there. Perhaps many of these are starting teachers, but with a median compensation of a teacher in 2020 of $125,000 a year, there's a lot of ongoing cost in that list. I like that approach, as long as we do what we need to do to afford it. I've been suggesting we spend on our, our money on that kind of support for kids for a long time, and I'd also suggest we raise the pay of starting teachers. I've been doing that for a long time as well. So can we sustain this for the future? Are we simply going to be pink-slipping these people in another year or two? The numbers look pretty rosy this year, a 1.5 million surplus is awesome. Next year's, we go down to 13.1 in deficit, that's not so good. Um, and unfortunately, we have the reserves to tap into avoiding problems. Um, a lesson that our board and our district kind of forgot a couple months ago, we dropped our reserve from 5% to 3%. 2020, 2425 doesn't look too good. Um, at that point, we're overspending by 14 million. We'll see what happens then, reserves cover it, but we'll see what happens when we get there. I'm sure everyone in the district will have their hands out for extra raises between now and then, so we'll see what happens to that deficit. Perhaps we should learn a lesson now. Perhaps now is the time to, instead of giving out every dollar to existing employees and raises on top of schedule raises, um, maybe we should think about the projected declines in enrollment and do more of the things that parents want to have for their kids to help slow that decline, um, or some of the things Raquel mentioned earlier today. My last daughter graduated earlier this month with honors, number three, so I have a hat-trick, by the way. Um, so I no longer have any, any direct skin in this game, but I really do hope for the sake of everyone's kids that our board and our district think about putting the brakes on taking candy from babies and planned that plan and shift to putting money into things that actually improve the education of our kids. Things like more teachers, smaller class sizes, and perhaps even raising starting teacher pay. Or maybe even free things, like proving you appreciate the importance of public comment by moving it back where it belongs at the beginning of the meeting. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Again, I'd like to, um, thank staff and those, um, board members involved, the excellent work you did in terms of getting our budget, um, solvent. It's such a relief, and it hasn't been solvent since, I think, 2017, you know? So, um, thank you again for your hard work and diligence. Excellent work.
Yeah, meeting our third year is, wow, that was loud, sorry. Is amazing. Um, it is the dedicated hard work of staff and the board for pushing hard and everybody working together. Uh, because we don't have the board discussion at the end, this is the time that I want to bring up something that came through the governor's budget, which is that there is now more funding for home-to-school transportation. So within our budget discussion, I think we do need to be thinking about if we have needs on transportation. The state now will fund us 60% of transporta, transportation costs. And I'm hoping that we can have a conversation about that.
Trustee, um, Joyce, I'm, I don't have that information. I was under the impression that it was still in discussion in terms of the state reimbursement. It hasn't been...
They made a deal yesterday, yeah.
As of last week?
Yesterday.
Yesterday?
Yeah. So I'm just bringing it to our attention, it's not that we're going to vote on right this second, but it'd be good for us to be thinking about it as we're in July and the new school year starts in September. Oh, we're not in July yet, are we? Soon enough.
Jumping ahead.
Great work.
Gasoline will be, what, $10 a gallon by then?
We still get 60% of whatever it is at that time. Hopefully, we have electric buses too.
Well, they can buy electric buses, number one, they, the energy does go, and like, with some of the hills in Oceanside, even though people think it's flat, those buses don't always, are, are not able to go up those hills, so...
The new buses are absolutely ready for hills. They got it.
I'm going to disagree with you on that, only because I rode one of them.
We'll have to have a field test for you guys or something.
We'll have a competition one day.
I'm really excited about this budget, and I'm glad we're out of the qualified. I appreciate Mr. Madison pointing that out to us for the last several years, um, and I took a, took, took quite a few shots over that over the years, but, um, we're out of it right now, and, um, hopefully we can work with our partners and stay, you know, out of a qualified budget. But I appreciate the work that staff's done, our, our labor partners and, and the community in, in keeping us on this issue all this time. So with that, I'd move approval of the, um, adopted budget for the 2223 school year and multi-year projections.
I'll second that question. First and a second?
I just want to say that I'm excited because I know that this is my peeve too about this budget, and so I appreciate all the work that everyone has put into it because I know it has been many a conversation that has gone on. I know from my part, everybody has taken it, everybody. And so just thank you so much because seeing this that we're in positive, I love it so much. And so just thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Madison, for leaving all the conversations that we've heard over all the years and over all the time, so just thank you for all that. I will go, uh, are we at, all those in favor, no, yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. F four O, we are at A to B, adoption of resolution number fifty-seven, twenty-one, twenty-two, designating certain general funds as committed fund balances. Staff presentation?
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez, as I shared during the presentation, when the state reserve levels exceed three percent of the total Proposition Ninety-eight expenditures, that triggers a ten percent cap on local district reserves. If a district has reserve funds exceeding ten percent, the overage must be designated for other purposes, with those purposes specified for the board to review and approve through a resolution. And that's what this resolution represents, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve resolution number fifty-seven as presented.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion.
Second, I support this, let's go.
Thank you.
My only other public comment is related to what I said earlier, and that, that twelve million dollars assigned, I think it's really important that we understand how we're going to use that to boost our ADA. And this, again, fits in with that other conversation about transportation. If there are students who aren't getting to school because they can't get to school, that may be a good use of some of those funds.
I agree with that, but I also know that students have a way of getting to places where they want to go without, well, I won't go into that, but I think we need to look at priorities, or the student needs to, the parents need to look at priorities. You know, I, I don't quite buy the fact that you say students don't come to school because of lack of transportation, when they can go other places.
K, K, K-five students, young children is who I'm really, and even in what was passed, there is an ask for us to focus on K-five students and equitable access to transportation, that's part of what passed. So that, that's who I'm talking about generally, I'm not talking about kids that can drive or ride bikes that are older and more responsible. That's it.
Okay, I, I'm still.
Like you said, it's a conversation for another day.
Yes, okay.
We'll have to continue that conversation. As long as there can be equity within everything that we do for all of our students, and that's the number one focus of everything that we do anyway. So, um, we have a motion to approve, do we have a motion?
We have.
Got a motion, and a second, we have, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Eight C, approval of resolution number fifty-six, twenty-one, twenty-two, authorizing the use of education protection against account EPA revenues for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. Staff presentation, please.
Thank you, the education protection account provides local educational agencies or LEAs with general purpose state aid funding. The EPA funding is a component of OUSD's local LCFF entitlement as calculated in the principal apportionment. The Oceanside Unified School District Governing Board determines how the monies will be spent each year. Monies received from this account cannot be used for salaries or benefits for administrators or any other administrative costs. Oceanside Unified is projected to receive seventeen point eight million for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Since the inception of the EPA, the district has utilized EPA's monies to fund regular classroom teacher salaries.
Thank you. No speakers, staff?
I'll move approval.
I'll second. Thank you. Board discussion? Call for a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eight D, approval of conditional assignment agreement between Oceanside Unified School District and MLC Holdings, Inc., related to the Pacifica property and the carve-out parcel, carve-out parcel.
Thank you, the district is in the process of selling the Pacifica property to MLC Holdings. There's a small parcel of the property known as a carve-out parcel that we do not own free title to. The district notified MLC Holdings that, by the way of adverse possession, we may have a valuable claim of ownership of the carve-out parcel. Although clearing of the title to the carve-out parcel is not required to close escrow for the property, the district and MLC Holdings agreed that MLC Holdings may try to quiet title or attempt another course of action to clear the title. The district has further agreed to reasonably cooperate with such efforts. As a component of that cooperation, the board is asked to consider conditionally assigning its rights, standing, title and interest in the carve-out parcel to MLC Holdings, so it may move forward with the quiet title action. This item approves the conditional assignment agreement and authorizes staff to move forward with its execution and to take other steps necessary to effectuate its intent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for staff?
No questions, I'll, I'll move approval of this effort to clear the title with our partner.
I'll, I'll second.
Thank you, we are first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Going to nine, public policy development, nine A, approval revision to board policy one-three-one-two-point-three, uniform complaints. Staff presentation, please.
This item is for board approval, it's an update that recommends to reflect California law AB one-thirty-one and re-numbers the California preschool, preschool school code section. It also ensures consistency with the California Department of Education's twenty-one, twenty-two federal program monitoring instrument.
Thank you, any questions for staff? No, no speakers.
Move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Call for a vote? All those in favor?
Aye. Sorry.
Nine B, approval revision to board policy one-three-one-two-point-one, complaint concerning district employee, staff presentation, please.
This item is to update the language that clarifies timelines for submitting complaints, appeals and providing responses. It also ensures that the complaints be submitted in writing and clarifies who investigates and at what stage, as well as how the appeals are processed by the school board.
Thank you, any questions for staff?
No speakers?
Speakers.
Move approval.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nine C, approval of revisions to board policy six-one-four-six, graduation requirements, standards of proficiency, staff presentation, please.
Yes, good evening, board, nine C and nine D, but we'll speak just to nine C, they are related. Nine C is the board policy that outlines the courses studied required for graduation, how to earn credits towards graduation, and the ways that students with special needs, IUPs, five-oh-fours, students who may be experiencing homelessness or military-connected students, as well as students who have experienced interruptions due to the pandemic, may receive their graduation or their high school diploma. This is a, includes the ways to increase their credit by examination, high school classes that are offered in middle school such as the AP Spanish that we offer. Approving this policy will align our work with our ninth grade course that you approved earlier this evening, our ethic studies earlier, and continues to require three years of mathematics for students, but not necessarily mathematics two, but allow for greater choices that students can have, for example, in statistics, calculus, or data analysis, that we have found that the UC feels might be other, more aligned with modern instruction and needs in the curriculum. So approval of this will align our work with our ideals for our students.
That is good to hear, especially about having a variety of courses that are still A through G required, R K required, that our students, you know, can do more than just what traditionally they have been doing. And it's also good to know that we will not be eliminating calculus.
I'll move approval.
I would say, any questions for staff? Okay, you have first?
Second.
Second, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Four D, approval of revisions to board policy six-one-four-six-point-one, high school graduation requirements.
Similar to the revisions made above in the last policy, this will also align our policies with our work that we have put forward as I explained in the last item.
Thank you.
Move approval.
Questions?
No, let's get, let's do it.
Is that a second? Is that motion approved?
Yeah.
All right, we have first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. And now we move forward to public comments, non-agenda items. We have fifteen speakers?
Fifteen?
Okay, real quick, board, the Board of Education is happy to receive comments about items and issues on tonight's agenda, as well as topics within the board's jurisdiction that does not appear on the agenda. Generally, each person may appear, may speak for up to three minutes. However, the total time for public input may be limited to twenty minutes per item or topic. While the total time per speaker for a given topic may be slightly reduced to certain circumstances, all persons wishing to address the board will have a meaningful opportunity to do during the meeting. An individual may only turn in one off-agenda public comment card per board meeting. In addition, no one, no one individual may give their time to anyone else for the purpose of extending their public comment time. Open meeting laws and fairness to other residents may have an interest in your topic prohibit the board from taking action or engaging in extended discussion of your concerns. Thank you.
Are you okay with biology break, or you're good? Okay, cool. All right, let's go.
I'll call three at a time, Tiffany Ortega, Todd Madison and Jim Henderleiter.
Good evening, oh, you do have to get in here, don't you? Good evening, trustees, Dr. Vitale, cabinet, colleagues and community, I am the president of the Teachers Association, but I'm here tonight speaking about my former title that I had, the mother of Oceanside Unified Students, similar to Mr. Madison. Four of them, by the way, four children that attended Oceanside Unified School District since kindergarten. As of El Camino's graduation, I no longer have any children enrolled in OUSD. I'm going to cry, I actually, I'm sad. They graduated in two thousand sixteen, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Since two thousand two, I have been an OUSD parent, that's many years of observing this district as a parent. Observing various dress codes, uniforms, anyone remember uniforms? Curriculum adoptions, pedagogical pendulum swings, board members, board meetings, district admin. But let me share what is staggering to me to think about. Approximately two hundred teachers in this district have found themselves with a Cooper Ortega on their roster. Those teachers have taken the time and found the way to connect and educate my babies. They didn't push an agenda, they didn't try to force anything on them, they treated my children with respect, because they did. They treated them as if they had great expectations of them, because they did. They treated them as if they believed that, that my children and their peers could conquer the world with the knowledge that they were acquiring, because they do believe that, and my children will. My children are lovely people with educated minds and full hearts, who are fierce advocates, who will not back down when they believe in a cause. I want to take a moment to thank all of those teachers for looking at my children, for looking at my children with respect in their eyes, kindness in their heart and equity in their practice. I want to encourage this board and cabinet to continue to let those teachers do what they do best, support every student at every level in this district. Let those teachers continue to guide, let them continue to support, let those teachers continue to inspire, as they have done with my children and thousands of other OUSD students. And you know what? This parent wants to see teachers paid competitively for their art of their teaching, their years of schooling and professional development, their skill set that is unmatched and their unbiased treatment of all Oceanside students, thank you.
All right, thanks. So congratulations to Tiffany as well, I know what it's like. I think all kids deserve the kind of education our kids got. And again, I think we should put our money there for the future as well. Once again, as I've said before, the comment period needs to be moved back to the beginning of the meetings where they belong. Our district here, being here, is simply doing its job, you're paid for that. Our board is here because they choose that when they decided to run, that's part of your gig too. But making parents who want to speak on an issue that's important to them wait until the end of the meeting, sit through all the discussions of all the minutia involved in running a school district, has really just one purpose, which is a reduced participation. We've seen that before, we saw it at the last meeting, you know, the public comment didn't start until nine, or not later than that, I think it was, which makes it very difficult for the people here who have other things to do. So when do we move public comment back to the beginning of the meeting? We need to do that. So of course, there's nothing to prevent the district from allowing participation online as well. I've seen this at many city council meetings now that I watch in other, other cities. The tech hurdles are not huge, I've seen many city council meetings that allow public participation via Zoom as well, so we could do that easily. I'm sure Greg's people can handle it, perhaps that should be part of the tech plan. Beyond that, as I've said many times, our board has forgotten who voted them into this, this office, we, the parents. The board is supposed to be the voice of parents in our district, but as we've seen so much in the past few years, we appear to be the voice of employees and adults in the district, not necessarily parents and kids. We hear how important our kids are, but once again, if you want to see where someone's priorities lie, watch where our money is spent. We just saw some great news, we see our money is being spent now, I think in, in more of the right, the ways I think would be right, but we need to keep that up. As Joe Biden once said, don't tell me what you value, show me your budget and I'll tell you what you value. For those watching these meetings, if you recognize this, if you're a person who sees problems and wants to fix them, how about helping? You know, this year, as you guys know, it's an election year, it's time for parents to step up and take control of our board to make it work for our kids, not for special interests. Districts one, three and four are up for election, the district website has maps, if you're not sure what district you're in, go to the Board of Education site, it's right there. If you're listening to this, you care about the education of our kids, it's time to step up and run. I'm a co-director of the Oceanside Parent Association, and the association is planning on doing what it can to support kids-first candidates in the next election. But first, we need those candidates. If you'd like to discuss what running for board is all about, email us, the email address is oceanside.usd@parentassociation.net, that's oceanside.usd@parentassociation.net. Be sure to join the parent association in its fight at parentassociation.org. Let's keep up the fight to improve the education of our kids, thank you.
Is it this one? I apologize for not looking more presentable, I just came from summer camp, and I did not have time to go home and change, so what you see is what you get. I really have a praise report, I really want to share something that really struck me. Do you guys know about the Panoramas, the panorama survey? The panorama survey went out to all students, and it pretty much, that's a survey that really is getting to the point of, do you, do students feel like they belong in the district, and what kind of relationship do they have to their teacher? That's really kind of what it boils down to, and I just want to share something. So with the K, with the, with the grade six through twelve, this teacher-student relationship was forty-seven percent. The adult transition program was eighty-five percent. The student sense of belonging for grade six through twelve was thirty-nine percent. And it, the adult transition program was ninety percent. I'm not saying this to toot the horn of ATP. What I'm saying is kind of getting to the point, if you recall what I said last time I was here, is that if we as teachers and if the direction that you have on the school board can be to really instill a sense of belonging for every single student, no matter who they are, no matter what their background, no matter what color, no matter what, you know, anything like that, we really need to embrace all of our students. Some of the things that we do with the adult transition program is, we acknowledge, we, we do embrace, we listen to everybody, we give everybody a sense of belonging and responsibility. And I don't think that that needs to just be solely something for the adults who are in this adult transition program, eighteen to twenty-two. I think that we as teachers, if no matter what grade we're teaching, can instill that, that would go a long way to really give students a sense of belonging, you know, there's an old saying, students don't care how much you know until they know. There you go, until they know how much you care. I remember teachers I've had all through school, I don't exactly remember what they taught, but I remember, did I? but I remember, did I feel that they accepted me? Did I feel that I had a, a say? Did I feel like I had, that I belonged? And, and that could go for any, 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 any grade. I do have one thing to bitch, excuse me, pitch about, and that is that the, the pay for the special ed aides is really low. For what they do and the sacrifices that they make, I really feel that that pay should be higher for special ed aides. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
Next three speakers, Patrick Higera, Michelle Harrington, and Graham Frazier.
Yeah, so I just want to set the story straight with you people. I got a letter from your lawyers, thank you very much. It's a bunch of, I won't say what it is, but I just want to set the story straight. I have never threatened any of you, none of you. So if you ever feel threatened by the word of God, because that's all I read to you, if you feel threatened by that, you need to take it up from the King of Kings, okay? That's not from me. Anyways, you were the one, Mr. Joyce, who, "Oh, that's a threat, that's a threat." No, you really should get a Bible and read it, probably do you some good. Also, I saw you this weekend at the parade, you looked really good, yeah, we're right behind you. I think you had maybe, out of your five cars, maybe three American flags, I think? Everything was purple on it, you know, kind of like Barney the, the purple, you know, dinosaur. That's what I thought I was behind, was Barney the Purple Dinosaur. You know, probably ninety-nine point five percent of the people there had American flags. Obviously, you're not proud of being American, you're not, you had, like I said, you had maybe two flags on there. So I just want people to know that, you know, Eleanor, what she said about her family, I thought that's awesome, how you're, you know, you have such a family legacy of, of soldiers. And that is so awesome, Eleanor, I think that is great. But for what he pulled on Independence Parade, you should be mad at him, because that's a disgrace. That's a disgrace for not representing our flag. I was out there proud, carrying our flag. You were out there clowning around, you should be ashamed of that, very ashamed of that. And then for you to raise that, that flag that we're supposed to be representing this month underneath our American flag, shame on you. You should be embarrassed for that as well. So you know what? You don't have our backs, you don't have our kids' backs, you're not, you, you know, in my book, that's treason. That's treason. So you know what? Shame on you, you shouldn't even celebrate the Fourth. Do you even think you're American? Shame on you, and shame on all of you if you thought that was okay to put that flag that we're supposed to be representing this month under the American flag? That's despicable.
Well, I didn't think I'd be back here, but I, I did hear about the letter that he got. Nobody comes here to threaten any of you guys. You know, the way I look at it is we're all created in the image of God. I think sometimes we need to be reminded of that. And I do learn a lot here, and I really appreciate what you said, I heard everything you said, it was really well put. I did hear what you said, I think you talk too much to your own peers, because it was very difficult. The intellect, I know your intellect-
Ma'am, will you please address the Board?
Okay, well, she's an intellect. And I, I think the psychologists in our school districts are concerning me. Oh, we need, I don't know what happened to the PTA meeting, the Parent Teachers Association. We're kind of in a federally funded, state-funded, union meeting. I'm getting a little nervous, okay? And I appreciate your intellect, but when you all talk too much amongst yourselves, you sound like idiots. Because we pay your taxes, and I hope you're not, I mean, your, 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 whatever, your check every month. I hope you're not laughing all the way to the bank. Because all I know is I am a woman of faith, I was a Democrat most of my life, till I got on my knees, and I had, I have a relationship with Christ, and I respect all of you. We're not here to attack anybody's personal beliefs, but we are all patriots and Americans. And I've traveled, I have got a Marine Corps background myself. I was raised with a great dad who has worked for the Pentagon. He was, worked for the Joint Chiefs of Staff, I've traveled my whole life. I went to the International School of Bangkok, Thailand, I went to Hawaii School for Girls. And none of those are stupid here. The way I look at it, we're equal in the eyes of God, but we seem to have a real problem and a divide with, all of a sudden, I think it's a hundred years of people with their intellect coming into the schools. And I think that the way we're going is a lot of, of smart parents, if you don't start coming here, if you're watching this, you better get your butts in here, and you better start participating, and really understanding what's going on. And I have never been a prejudiced person, I don't know anyone who is. I love every person, so long as you're a hard worker and you believe in American values. I think that's who you're talking to out here. And when we come here, if there's two or more believers, God is here with us now. And I think you just need to be reminded of that. Who cares who's sleeping with who? I mean, I am so sick and tired of this whole LGBTQ stuff that has been brought into the schools. Let the parents deal with that stuff, okay? And I, I respect them if they're hard workers, fine. But I think we're getting real sick and tired of hearing all of this stuff thrown down our throats. And the psychologists, please, quit talking amongst yourselves and start talking plain English.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not going to take up too much time, I want to talk about the elephant in the room, which is the poor student performance. I've been to, I don't know how many board meetings, and I've really never heard any of you talk about the poor performance. Okay, this one?
No, not that one, the other one.
Okay, I'm here to talk about the elephant in the room, which is the poor student performance. My understanding at Oceanside High, for example, that most of the students in science and engineer, and English, math, are not at, at grade level. I've never heard that discussed here. I've never heard that it's, all I hear is sort of pablum, about how great that these different programs are, how inclusion and diversity programs are coming along. I saw in the, there was a presentation earlier in the board meeting about goals for the roadmap, roadmap for 2022. It was quite extensive, I was impressed, but there was nothing in there about student performance. And it seems to me as representatives of my representatives, representing our kids, representing the community, that it's your job to demand of the, of the teachers that they do a better job. Superintendent should be held to task before, because the students are not operating at grade, are not operating at a level that they're going to compete in a well-society. They may be well-accepted because of their full understanding of different cultural issues, which I applaud, but not at the expense of basic reading, writing, and arithmetic. Thank you.
Brad Kabaya, Katie Taylor, and Anthony Jacquez.
Graham, I would just recommend checking out the LCAP that was passed tonight. That's specifically got data, and that's our plan for addressing that. Thank you, sir.
Alright, this is the last time I'm, I'm going to talk, I promise, tonight. So first, I would be remiss if I did not cover this, talking to my children. They would really appreciate if, if you guys implemented a policy for no homework next year. They, they don't like it, so if you can do that, that would do me a favor, so I would appreciate that. Father of the, Father of the Year, awesome. Other thing, thanks for the, for the positive results on that, on that budget. It's definitely a lot better than what it's been, so great job on that. In that, I know that was a challenge, but for the next challenge, can that be you guys implementing policies to lower the student-to-teacher ratios? The last time I checked, it was around like thirty students to one teacher or more. That's, most of you are educators, to the educators in the room, I'm sure that, that, that offers quite the challenge for just, just connecting with those students and being able to, to, to really just, you know, focus in and, and help, help those students to learn. Which will then in turn, you know, to, to, to Graham's point, also help foster that environment and raise those performance standards and allow, and allow pretty much y'all's report card to go up as far as like, like, like excellence in math, science, things like that. Also, on the teachers, hey, shout out to y'all, y'all are awesome. We are all a, a product of teachers who, who care deeply for us. No one in this room is, is here because of, because teachers didn't care. And that's, and, and I, and I got three, and I got three siblings that are teachers too, so they're, so they're, so they're cool too, even though my mom's favorite. I would like to offer your, offer your reminder, reminder that government is not man-made. Government, which is, this is a form of government, it comes from God. God, God has, God created government, he created the governmental system, and we are a nation based on Judeo-Christian values. And those, in those values, those, those are what allowed us to, to win our independence from, from Great Britain. Those are the, you know, those, those values are the values that allowed us to reconnect after the Civil War. And through prayer, which I wanted to offer earlier, prayer is the reason why, why Putin hasn't conquered the Ukraine yet, because of many, many people around the world praying for him. I kind of, I'll be, I'll be honest, I'm kind of offended that I wasn't able to pray earlier. And I want you to know that I'm praying for each and every single one of you, for your, for your success. Because your, your success equals our student's success, and that's what, and that's what it's all, and that's what it's all about. Parents, if you're not liking what's, what's going on right here, I encourage you to, to run for the school board this year. Thank you.
Good evening, school board, I want to start my presentation. Derek, Eric Joyce.
I have to wear my glasses every time, because I will just leave there wrapped in tears. Every, every year, there are several students who highlight their families who risked literally everything to leave home, cross an imaginary border, and give their cha, their child a chance at the American dream. And those kids take that up, and they're going off to college to do amazing things and to change the world. And it is so powerful to see in real time, the work that we're doing and the work that we do to bring families in and to bring up these incredibly young-
Okay, that was from the June seventh, uh, school board meeting. I want to show you a picture. This is what it looks like for families to risk everything to cross Eric's imaginary border. Monday, June seventeenth, 2022, San Antonio, Texas, eighteen-wheeler truck of death and human trafficking. Officials confirmed Tuesday, fifty-one migrants died in the incident, including twenty-two Mexicans, seven Guatemalans, and two Hondurans. The remainder have yet to be identified. Others were hospitalized due to heat-related illness, many in critical condition. Eric, the border is not imaginary. You and others who peddle the idea of an imaginary border are as responsible for this tragedy as the cartel that loaded the truck. You and others who lure people across the border with your enticements are responsible. And what exactly do you mean by the work we do to bring families in? Just give the imaginary, just get over the imaginary border and look what we have for you. Your globalist thinking and messaging is killing people, including the children inside that eighteen-wheeler and the body bags lying outside that truck. The problem for this Board, Oceanside Schools have declining enrollment as people pull their kids out of the failing system like Graham talked about. So you need kids, any kids in those seats. Got to keep the teachers raises and support a superintendent who makes approximately four hundred thousand a year with pay and benefits. The United States of America has legal borders. Anyone teaching our borders are imaginary, should not be permitted to teach in school or serve on a school board, period. Eric Joyce resigns.
Anthony Jacquez? I'm sorry?
I see you can pull it out, hold it.
I don't know. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Anthony Samir Jacquez, I was a sixth-grade student at Jefferson Middle School. I want to share a little bit about me. I'm a Chicano Arabi, I like building law-riding bikes, I like going to the gym, my favorite subject is reading.
You're doing great, buddy.
You're doing amazing.
Hold on, hold on. Okay.
You got this, you're good.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Anthony Samir Jacquez, I was a sixth-grade student at Jefferson Middle School. I want to share a little bit about me. I'm a Chicano Arabi, I like building law-riding bikes, I like going to the gym, and my favorite subject is reading. I'm a pretty good kid, but this year I was bullied and physically assaulted several times. I went to the ER law and even ended up with broken bones. My principal and vice-principal never reported anything to the police or to the district. My mom had to do it. Kids called me names like raghead, terrorist, and sandflee, and it was okay. But we, uh, we were not allowed to say the N-word, because it, it is offensive. The school SRO even told my mom to send me to a school with mostly Middle Eastern kids, so I won't be bullied. Why should I relocate? Oh, I can't see. I did nothing wrong, I was just being nice. It, it's not a crime to be nice, to be me. But I was made to feel it is. What is the staff going to do to ensure changes? Sorry, I can't see. What is the staff going to do to ensure everyone's safety, to ensure my safety? I deserve to be safe too. Thank you for your time.
Maria Jacquez, Perry Alvarez, and Victoria Mariani.
Good evening, my name is Maria Jacquez.
Please respect those that are in here waiting to speak right now, thank you. I'm sorry, thank you.
Yes, my name is Maria Jacquez, the young man that just spoke is my son. My son went through a horrible year, as you've heard. From the second day of school, he was bullied, harassed, physically assaulted, and everything was overlooked. I myself was battling through cancer this year. So it was very difficult for me to get my son to school on time and to get myself to treatments, and to still have to pull myself away from treatments to come and ensure my son's safety. This year was, was horrible. I hear everybody saying that they care about these children, that they care about their safety and well-being and their education. Really, that is not what I saw this year, not at all, absolutely not. Things were reported to the principal, and the principal failed to report it to the school board. So therefore, the school board wasn't reporting it to the police department, so nothing was ever filed with the DA's office. So when I called up to State Board, they were like, "What's going on?" "Are you kidding me? Why are these things not being reported?" My son had broken bones, broken bones! Because he's a Chicano Arabi? Dr. Vitale, why? Aren't you a part of the ACLU or NAACP or- Or what is it that you're a part of? Because I contacted the NAACP, the ACLU, our Chaldean Association. I contacted the Brown Berets, Black Lives Matter, because my son reached out on the only platform he felt safe on, which was our lowrider community platform, and was begging for help, begging for somebody to step in and help him. Where were you? Where were you? Because I tried contacting your office, and every single time I did, every time I requested to have a sit-down with you, I was denied. Every single time. So really, if my son can't go to his principal, his vice principal, or the school SRO, wherever she went, because she straight told me to my face, "Maybe you should put your son in a predominantly Middle Eastern school so he won't be bullied." Are you kidding me? If my son was any other skin color, would you be saying those same words?
Right.
They slipped off your tongue like hot butter, but it's okay because my son is Chicano Arabi, right? What is the school board going to do to fix this, to make it safe for kids like my son to go to school? Make it okay? You really care about these kids and their safety and their well-being? What are you willing to do? A couple of classes? That's not going to be enough. When kids are going home with broken bones, that is not enough. Why are you failing to report? Why is your staff failing to report these things? You didn't know, right? You look very confused right now. You look very lost. I just recently found out that your principal and vice principal are not going to be at that school anymore, and that's why it's okay for them to step back?
Ma'am, I'm so sorry. Your time is up.
Me too. I'm very sorry.
If not, then Victoria Mariani.
Yeah, that's going to be a definite. Can we get somebody to talk to Dr. right now? I'm calling her.
Okay, Victoria. Thank you.
I'm here tonight to speak about the sale of Garrison Elementary School property to Van Deal Homes. I'm hopeful that since the total profit made off the sale of Garrison exceeds the current remodeling budget of San Luis Rey, that the monetary difference can be spent eradicating the grossly misplaced and extremely unsightly HVAC duct that is running vertically through the center of the NPR, which doubles as the house or audience space for performances. At the renaming celebration, I can't bring myself to call it a groundbreaking ceremony because no ground had been broken at SLR yet, even though we were not selected to have summer school at our site, which we are in dire need of due to the fact that construction would be happening there, but it's not happening there, but I digress on that topic. At the renaming ceremony, I was shocked to see that district leaders actually made a large banner of the proposed NPR with that eyesore of a duct front and center. Honestly, it felt like a slap in the face to those of us who have been fighting for an appropriate performance space comparable to what we had back in good old Garrison. I'm here to repeat my plea to our trusted board members and district leadership to please, please, please use the profits made from the sale of Garrison directly to relocate that huge monstrosity of a duct, or at the very least hide it in a soffit on either side of the building. From the very first meeting of the remodeling committee, theater club directors have pushed for a blowout of the San Luis Rey NPR ceiling to provide an optimum performance space for our blossoming visual and performing arts program, but we have been met with opposition from the district every step of the way. District leaders claim there is no money in the budget for that and that the cost of it would be in the millions. But after studying the roofline and support beams of the SLR NPR and speaking with our custodian today, I refute those claims. The distance from the support beams and ceiling panels to the roof is only a few inches, and there doesn't seem to be any plumbing or major electrical running through that space. So again, I implore the board to direct the district and the architects to just look into the cost of removing the drop ceiling to maximize the sightlines to the stage and acoustical quality of performances for the audience. It is ironic that OUSD touts equity and happily receives awards from outside organizations based on those ideals, but if you look at the SLR remodel budget, eighteen-point-three million, and compare it to that of the proposed Reynolds remodeling budget, fifty-five million, you see that here in Oceanside Unified, we have a glaring case of haves versus have-nots. SLR Pablo Talk should not receive less money because our school is so old that we can't get a full remodel. We shouldn't be punished for circumstances that aren't out of... that are out of our control. Let's do something that is good, not something that just looks good from the outside.
Our last speakers, Rose Figuera, Michael Alvarez, Ashlyn Gerard, and Anna Grimm.
Okay, so I want to talk about this book list that I'm assuming Dr. Jordy Sparks, since you're the Division of Equity and Diversity and Inclusion. So there were eight pages of books that you approved for equity and cultural proficiency, and I only have two pages, but they're pre-K through second grade. So we're talking about three-year-olds, four-year-olds, five-year-olds, six-year-olds. So books like Julian is a Mermaid, My Princess Boy. So I would like to read the kind of books that are being peddled on our children. My Princess Boy. My Princess Boy is four years old. He likes pretty things. Pink is his favorite color. He plays dress-up in girly dresses. He dances like a beautiful ballerina. My Princess Boy has a cool brother. His brother plays baseball and soccer, and his brother dances with My Princess Boy. My Princess Boy loves his brother. My Princess Boy loves his dad. His dad tells My Princess Boy how pretty he looks in a dress. His dad holds his hand and tells him to twirl. My Princess Boy smiles and hugs his dad. My Princess Boy has playdates with boys and girls. He likes to climb trees in his Princess Boy tiara crown. When he plays dress-up, he likes to change clothes a lot. He wears a green ballet leotard and dances with his friends. I love My Princess Boy. When we go shopping, he is the happiest when looking at girls' clothes. But when he says he wants to buy a pink bag or a sparkly dress, people stare at him. And when he buys girls' things, they laugh at him, and then they laugh at me. It hurts us both. Once My Princess Boy wore a dress at his birthday party, he welcomed his friends to his home, and he said, "I am a Princess Boy." He put on jewelry, and he liked how pretty he looked and waved his Princess Boy wand. And then My Princess Boy was a princess for Halloween. Well, I'm sure that you get the drift of that. So, familias también te quiero decir que estas son los libros que están enseñando a nuestros estudiantes, y es basura. Basura, okay? So what basically you guys are doing, let's see, The Washington Examiner kind of exposed the Poway Unified School District, which is in our county. California School District uses Jedi techniques to confuse three-year-olds about their gender. Leaked meeting notes from the Poway Unified revealed the district uses Jedi techniques to indoctrinate students with left-wing political principles. Brainwashing students to adhere to left-wing political beliefs is, while problematic, nothing new in schools. It is much more of a problem to groom young children by discussing certain sexual topics.
Thank you, Michael. Ashlyn. We don't approve at all.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Michael.
Sure.
My name is Michael Alvarez, and I am a fifteen-year-old sophomore at Oceanside High School. And before I start, I would like to say I am deeply embarrassed by the audience and their incompetent statements and that I do not agree with them. The use of Chromebooks is needed more than ever due to the damage and vandalization of textbooks. Students feel more comfortable working on personal or provided devices during quizzes and tests where their stress levels are often high. The use of Chromebooks should not take up the whole class period. I, as well as other students, have realized that there is not much reading anymore, which can lead to poor handwriting. Security is needed at all the schools, but some of the security personnel are not all that great. Yes, but they protect us, but some of them can be racial and offensive. For example, two years ago, when me and my friends were in line for lunch, an SRO came up and split the lines. She told us colored in one, Mexicans in the other, and white in another. I was deep... I was in complete disbelief, especially when no one took action. Then just this past year at Oceanside, the same SRO decided to be racial towards another one of my friends, which caused them to switch schools. All I ask is for more action to be taken when incidents like this happen, instead of a slap on the wrist and being told not... and them being told not to do it again. And just to let you know, and just to let you know, you are doing an amazing job and don't give up on the children. I would like to thank you for raising the pride flag and recognizing the students and supporting us. We need that. We need you. Thank you.
Before I start, I would like to personally apologize for the speakers shaming you and threatening you. I think you do a great job, and I personally know a few people on the board, and I think you guys are doing your best to represent the students, protect the students, and provide for the students. I would also like to mention the little boy that spoke earlier. I can personally sympathize for him because I've also been through that. Students first. Students are our highest priority, and every decision is made to maximize our students' well-being. This is the first item listed on the OUSD website under Values. My name is Ashlyn Gerard, and I'm a fourteen-year-old sophomore at El Camino High School. I am specifically speaking about this subject through personal experience, by listening to the past meetings and having my own things to say. When I first heard that parents and adults were advising and attempting to remove counselors from our district, I thought of some of my closest friends. People that I know personally have gone to their counselors for help, and trust me, many of them would not be here if they didn't have that accessibility. Each student trusted their counselor with personal information, and aside from a few instances that involved an immediate danger, it was kept confidential. From personal experience, when an immediate danger was involved, the proper actions were taken and lives were saved. Students, especially through these past couple of years, need that help. According to a Forbes article, over six thousand people aged ten to twenty-four died by suicide in 2020 alone. According to some studies, the number of high school students experiencing poor mental health and suicidal thoughts has improved six percent since schools have reopened, suggesting that being connected to peers and available counselors has helped improve students' lives since the beginning of the pandemic. Imagine how much worse that would be when you take away our primary access to counselors who help us manage emotions, mental well-being, and personal security. Without these resources, I'm positive we will see those rates rise again. All students need somewhere to go, especially since many kids in our district don't have support at home or access to other resources. I assume that if you are sitting here in this meeting, you support your children and help them access anything they need, but what about the hundreds of families that can't be here? We need to help all students in the district. Our mental health can very easily define our future. It's a big part of the building blocks to success. Without a good foundation, the entire tower will fall, resulting in isolation, dropping grades, students that can hurt themselves or others, and they're left without an efficient way to seek help. The school provides us with these building blocks through education, protection, and support. Counselors are the ones who help guide us through the school year emotionally. If our well-being truly is the top priority for the Oceanside Unified School District...
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a product of public school education myself. I'm a first-generation American. That's right, I said American. My family migrated here from Mexico illegally. They too consider themselves American. Nothing in this country represents us more than that flag that stands behind you. The fact that this school board is focusing more on equity guise to include students based on their gender, their sex, their identity, or their color, their skin, or their ethnic background does the complete opposite. It segregates students, as you just heard firsthand from that poor child. It also creates the students to believe that they are victims themselves and do not prop them up for the good character that is within them, that their parents are in charge of bringing out, not you, not their counselors, not their teachers. Their counselors and their teachers are there to guide them in their education. My counselor failed me. He told me that I was not able to do become a fighter pilot because I was a Hispanic woman. Okay? This was in the early 2000s, by the way. Guess what? I'm a successful aerospace worker, blue-collar aerospace worker, and I was a rocket engine mechanic for six years at SpaceX in LA. I don't need a college education or a PhD. I need real-life instances and experiences to teach me the character of the person, whether they are a good person or not. That's it. I don't need to know, nor do I care if they are black, white, Asian, or they identify to be a unicorn. I don't care. It's the content of the character. Wasn't there a famous person that once said that? It's the content of the character that matters the most? Let's get back to that in our school district, please, because what you guys are creating is a dangerous platform for other people to feel power in their so-called identities, and it's causing separation of our students who are the future. They really are all we have left. None of us are going to be here in a few decades. They will be. Do you want them to grow up to be activists or good...
Yeah.
Productive members of society that are proud to be American. I am. That's what I am striving to be, and my kids, that's what I will raise them to be as well. And if you guys don't change the direction of this school board or you get replaced and you continue in this direction, my children will not be coming to this district, to this school. We will move like many other students have. That's why you have a declining enrollment.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, meeting adjourned at 8:31. Thank you.